Mrs. Haldor, here is Dr. Lockman. Here is Mrs. Main, here is Mr. Conings-Badson. Mark Dean, here.
Here.
Mr. Rollhome, here. Mr. Rucko.
Here.
Dr. George.
Here.
And Mr. Hauser.
Here. Solicitor, report, Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to report that the school board had an executive session before tonight's meeting. The matters discussed related to legal issues were a tax assessment appeal and MOU with Greer Valley Learning Center, pre-K at the elementary. Under personnel, we reviewed certain employee pay plan recommendations for various categories of employees, noted that teacher high-ones would be brought to the board next week, discussed briefly an educational grant to be approved at next meeting, and also took note of two retirements. Under safety and security, we discussed a flexible instruction day application that will be approved next week instead. Under the solicitor's report, there are two tax assessment cases that are settled, have been settled for some time, and we're going to be approving them next week. The joint petitions are there for your review and the review of the public. And that's all in my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Educational planning, Mrs. Mainz.
Yes, we'll begin with the student report.
Good evening. I have some computer troubles, so I'm going to read this on my phone. We've had multiple seniors have been CPR certified or AEP certified over the last month as part of a lunch and learn program. So we've got our kids living in kindergarten classes or kids who have looked for some other extracurricular activities, they've had the opportunity to become certified. In terms of athletics, Joshua Merla and August Lawrence have placed second in the Libya double tennis championship and then qualified for the PI LA tournament this week. We have a junior student, Cora Rado, Jen Kerjic, sorry if I mispronounced it, and Kiar Florick competed in the U-16 Tier Two Girls National Level Hockey Competition in California. So very far away. Then we have senior Ariel Tepper, who's the latest winner in the individual category of the 2023 Judge Christopher Filanci Youth Leadership Award, and this was also being commemorated in the 14th Annual CS as a leadership breakfast. Moving on to the junior high, Keystone Testing will take place through 17th to the 18th. The 17th also hosting a band chorus concert, which is in the senior high. May 18th is a jazz band concert, also in senior high touring at 7:00 PM. And then we have May 30th is the eighth grade hangar board field trip, and also on May 30th is the seventh grade field day. Elementary schools, in terms of, there are a lot of things scheduled here. On May 9th, elementary schools in grade four will begin to the musical symphony. And in the AES, May 9th, grade six will go to EWC TC for a tour. May 10th is their skating party. Grades four through six on the 11th will have their band concerts, with grades five through six having their chorus concert. Moving on to map view, on May 10th will be their fifth grade health fair, and their sixth grade career fair will be on the 30th, with their sixth year champion scheduled from the 22nd to the 24th. Moving on to the back view, we have their health fair is also on the 10th, and their kindergarten and youth show will be on the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not a question, I just want to commend the students for cleaning up that road coming off Route 30. What an improvement. Thanks guys for taking that out and doing it. You know, I never understand why people litter. I can't, it just drives me crazy when I see that. I've driven through five states here in the last week, and by far Pennsylvania is the most litter prone state I've ever driven through. I can't believe how bad it is. I don't understand that mindset, why people think they just threw rubbish out. But taking upon you guys to do that is a wonderful thing, to drive down that road and see it cleaned up and appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank the group that did that help us.
I was watching them that day, Dr. George, and they were so motivated that they were going up into the field by Lowe's and Walmart to clean up that area too, and we had to call them back and tell them, that's not ours, that's private property. But they were pretty motivated. Our officers were out with the police cars making sure that they were safe, so.
It's a great thing. I mean, you know, to get involved in your community any way you can, you know, is a testament to the community, but also a testament to the people that think enough of the community to make it nice, you know? And that's just a small step for being involved in your community, you know, it fosters that kind of involvement through the future. It's a great thing. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, another year is coming very quickly, and unfortunately, we wouldn't be saying goodbye to our two students of Report of the Month, and we have a certificate for each of them and a little token of our appreciation because they did such a wonderful job. So happy to have you. I appreciate that. Jewel, check it, it's not good exchange. This is a little token of appreciation. Thank you guys for all your work. Always coming. You always look so nice.
We're our best.
I think the board would like to know your future plans and what you're going to be doing.
So, going on the follow-up, I will be attending IDP on the National ROTC Scholarship for the Army, and I plan on studying natural science.
For my future plans, I'm going to be attending the University of Pittsburgh and I'll be studying computer science as I come forward.
I just wanted to say, when we first got this position, I was not able to expect coming here, and not only seniors were leaving, I was kind of wondering what the future direction of the district would be, especially with how rapid everything's been changing over the last few years. And I think just by sitting down and just observing all these meetings, I can say that with good faith that this district's in very good hands and that it's filled with people who actually care and are wanting to give their students, the faculty, the best opportunities they can. So just thank you for the opportunity with all of you.
You should have a follow-up.
Yeah, also, just like Michael said, I really want to thank you guys for just giving us this opportunity, just coming and seeing kind of like behind the scenes part of how our school is ran, you know, that allows it to go on like a day-to-day basis. It's really interesting, it was just such a cool opportunity for us to be here. So we thank you guys for allowing us to take part in everything you guys do. We're really thankful for all the work you guys do to just make sure our school can run properly throughout the day-to-day because we don't really realize how much goes into everything we do, you know, we just walk in the doors in the morning and leave at 3:00, you know? We don't expect too much stuff to be happening other than that, but you guys really showed us that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and we're really thankful that you guys take care of it all for us.
Just remember, you don't have to be strangers. You can come back and talk to us.
Do you want to get a picture?
That would be great.
Okay, can we get it for you guys? Come on, get up again. Mrs. Mainz, you want to get a picture with me?
No.
Honestly, I hope for the camera.
How do you want us? It's great. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for the nice. Of course. I just had the Mr. Corrector. It's so nice to see the students that were producing because, you know, you never expect words like that, but it was very nice and very wonderful.
You guys deserve the floor.
Oh, and secondly, we have another nice thing to do. We have an EWCTC Student of the Month, Vania, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Grumby.
Thank you. I just didn't sit down. Vania, it's your turn at the podium now. You've got to come up there and stand up too. It's always fun. Vania Grumby is the EWCTC Student of the Month, and I wanted Vania to come and be recognized by the Board of Education tonight as we do with our other EWCTC Students of the Month, but I want to, I was at the JOC meeting the night that she was recognized, and I want to read to you some of the things that Mr. Campbell spoke about and some comments from her, her teacher, Mrs. Youngstead. A senior from Greer Lutro, cosmetology, right? You correct me now if I get any of this wrong, okay? And I thought, this is one of the most interesting write-ups that we've had as a student. I'm glad that you're here. Vania was born to be a cosmetologist, braiding her Barbies at a very young age, right? Which is interesting, in your native Haiti. Is that correct? At the age of three. Now, she's enjoyed in makeup sessions and applications, and if I remember correctly, parents have been a part of these sessions? Absolutely, right? But what I, what I think is interesting about Vania is that she's on like the special effects side of things, and you enjoy the special effects?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now where are you going? And I already know this, but where are you going post-EWCTC graduation?
I'm going to Douglas Education Center for special effects makeup.
Okay, so the first time I heard about Douglas, what'd you call it again?
Education.
Douglas Education Center was when Vania talked about her, her future goals. We had a career fair at the high school last week that was set up by Mrs. Yetter and the career, the Next Pathways Coordinator System, and guess who was there? It was the Douglas Center, right? So I walked over to the table and I said, I'd never heard about this center, and here we are, like within two weeks I hear about it and we have a student going. So I thought that was awesome. You're earning your nail license this year?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I want to tell you what Mrs. Youngstead said. Vania always comes to class with a positive attitude and a willingness to help others. She excels in the nail and hair color curriculum and constantly puts forth her best effort to succeed academically. Once she's earned both nail and full cosmo licenses, again, she's going to the Douglas Education Center, and you'd like to open up maybe your own salon?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Anything else you want to do?
I want to go to film initiative.
Okay, so like do special effects?
Yeah.
Do you think you could fill the gap in my front two teeth? Maybe give me some of that hair color?
Yeah, you could try.
You could try.
Yeah.
Another future politician there. She's a member of EWCTC's National Technical Honor Society and Skills USA, and in her free time, she enjoys soccer, horseback riding, you have something in common with Mrs. Briscoe, and drawing. Congratulations, Vania.
Thank you.
I have a certificate for you. Do you, do you want to say anything to the board? Does the board have any questions for Vania? Yeah, I'd like to know how parents get away with not having your hair braided? Because I thought.
You're assuming that I have gotten away with that.
I know you, I know you get clean to get any fix.
Her father has long been asking.
Okay. Certificate for you.
Fantastic.
You get to make the look better.
Perfect. Thank you.
I guess the only question I have for you, and then you're done, and you can leave as I promised. How did you get interested in going to the EWCTC?
I always pursue my artistic sound of hair and color and stuff like that.
Okay, and you knew that was out there for you?
Yes.
Good. Have you enjoyed your time at EWCTC?
I loved it, yeah.
Yeah? Okay, all right. Congratulations, Vania.
Hi, everybody. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our Student Services Secretary, this is Missy Mulhern. She has been with Greer Lutro for two years now in our department, and she had the opportunity this year to attend several conferences with Mrs. Brasky, who's been a fabulous mentor to her. This conference that they attended last month was the Pennsylvania Association of Education Office Professionals. And this is a conference geared towards mainly central office students, central office support staff across Pennsylvania, and we came across the award and nominated Missy for it, and she was selected out of numerous applicants to win the statewide award. So a rather prestigious award, it's been around for almost 40 years at this point, and was very well known in the education office professionals world. A little bit about Missy and her role in student services. For those of you that are familiar with our department, we love data, we love numbers. So to summarize, sacred work, and paperwork, which is what we're starting with. Missy is in charge of keeping track of more than 2,000 different types of student documents on an annual basis. That includes our more than 500 students who receive special education services, our students with 504 plans and our students who are gifted. She also has to keep track of nearly 100 staff members with GNI, including all of the departments that encompass student services. She has to work with nearly two dozen out-of-district schools and placements in order to make sure that our students are taken care of. She manages a $3 million budget with us, and most importantly, keeps track of GNI on a day-to-day basis. So it is a great pleasure that I introduce Missy and congratulate her on this phenomenal If any of you have paperwork that you would like to be organized, Missy would love to do that. Me.
I think she has plenty of work to do.
She's great, and she brings forth all my projects on her, and she handles them with grace and is always smiling, so.
So Lori told me, and forgive me if I get this wrong, but Lori told me at the dinner presentation, they were, before they read the awardee's name, they were reading like the bio, the background, all that kind of stuff, and Missy made her own was like, oh, that's pretty impressive. So I, I appreciate what you do for the district, and I'm happy to see that you will recognize this such, and that you certainly deserve.
Thank you. I'm very honored to work for the district. For the past two years, it's, it's been great to work with the school student service team. Very thankful, they're very dedicated. I have learned so much from Lori and Eugene and Kara Sander also. We work great as a team, they give great advice daily, a lot of information that I've learned, so I'm very thankful for them.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You have enrollment reports attached, as always, just a comparison with kindergarten numbers. Right now, we have 288 students registered for kindergarten for the 23-24 school year. Last year, this time, we were sitting at 203, which is a difference of 15. If you recall, last month, it was a difference of 20, so we are slowly closing that gap as we move closer to the start of the year. If you have any questions about the enrollment report, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Most of the meetings will be agenda items for next week. We will be approving the ECAT Academy MOU between GLSD and GLA for the 23-24 school year. We will approve Western County School for the DEP 2023 Summer Extended School Year Program. We will approve the Badling School 2 2023 Summer Extended School Year Program. We will approve Maritie School and Extended School Year Program rates for 23-24, and approve the Saint Francis University College and High School Cooperative Agreement for the summer school year. We will approve application for the Department of Education for the Flexible Instruction Days Program for school year 23-24 and two subsequent years. We will approve a memorandum of understanding between Greer Lutro School District and Lincoln Valley Government Center Incorporated, operating the Pre-K and Alums Program at Badley Elementary School, August 11st, 2023 through January of 2024. We will also be approving the summer educational grants for teachers, and the curriculum for meeting minutes from a meeting on April 11th, 2023 on our patch. Most of the things I talked about have attachments, so please read them if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mainz. Vania, Mr. Watson, I'm going to put you on the back burner for a second if you don't mind. I know it's your time this time, so I'm going to move on to do some of the other things to get those off Mr. Watson's way. On the agenda for your approval will be a treasury report, payment of bills, to approve tax assessment, bill settlement, parcel number 61-1700176, and the following ones also, but also to approve natural gas procurement, administrative agreement to approve the gift grants and donations as listed, also to appoint Act 511 tax collectors for 23-24 school year, and to designate depositories for the 23-24 school year authorization to invest funds for the 23-24 school year, reappointment school district treasurer through June 30th of 2024, and approve the real estate tax assessment appeals program, to approve the district tax rebate program, also to approve the general fund proposed final operating budget, and the final mass committee meeting minutes from April 18th are attached, and our next meeting will be June 13th at 5:30 at the C and High School Library. Mr. Watson, please. All the way. Mr. Watson, no pressure, but Officer Bear has been waiting for this presentation for an entire year. You know what? I just saw Dr. Bedd in the apartment too, he looked like he was on some.
He went to get the pop.
So it's that time of year, and I always like to start by reminding everybody that, you know, just the timeline for all of this. The proposed final budget, we have to adopt by May 31st, okay? So what you adopt in May, you're still, it's going to, you know, we're going to bring the budget back to you in June, because the final budget is not due until June 30th, okay? On the other thing, I just wanted to remind everybody, we didn't just start this budgeting process a month or so ago. Our finance committee has been meeting since November, we've been talking about budget pretty much every month since the month of November, so we've kind of drilled down into, you know, greater detail than what you're going to see tonight in many of these areas. So let's get this started. Mr. Hauser, will you leave? Okay, so. There we go. Okay, so I'm going to start by reviewing our proposed final revenue budget. So our local revenue projections are around $37.3 million. Local revenue makes up about 59% of our total operating revenue, okay? We're looking at an increase of about 1.1 billion, which is around 3%. Now, what makes up that increase, and I'm very happy, these next items, very proud of this is, you know, how our school system is being impacted. Our real estate tax collections are projected to increase by $348,000. Now, this is based on a $2.5 million assessed property value growth. A lot of different communities has natural growth of that level, so I think that's a very positive statement, and we're very fortunate to be in the situation where we're seeing that natural revenue growth, okay? Earned income tax collections projected to increase by $250,000. It's based on trend as well as increased community earnings, okay? So residents within our community are obviously earning more money, this is driven by percentage, so that money is then passed along to the school district. Real estate transfer tax collections are projected to increase by $152,000. It is also based on trend and the increase that we've had in property transfers, which is basically the, you know, purchase of properties. Houses have gone up for sale, and they've been selling, and they've been selling very, very quickly, and they've been going higher than for what they were originally assessed for, and we're benefactor of that. Investment income is projected to increase by $159,000, which is based on higher rates of return. I mentioned to the finance committee before I came over here, I'm seeing CD rates 4% to 5%. This is the time of year where our revenue is very much depleted, but I'm hoping these rates will continue so that when we start to get our tax revenue in the months of August, September, and October, we can lock in these investment rates for longer than, you know, three to six months, what I've been doing, I'd like to, you know, get the lock clocked in over a longer period of time and get a higher rate of return. You know, historically, we were generating anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000 a year in interest. That dropped down to just $25,000 at one point in time. So the fact that that's continuing to grow again is a really good sign for our school district. So that's the local revenue. So let's look at the state revenue projections. State revenue, our total budget is around $23.6 million. State revenue makes up about 38% of our total revenue that is generated. We're looking at an increase of about $418,000, a little less than $420,000, which is 2%. The basic education subsidy is projected to increase by $477,000. So basically, what I did is I adjusted the 23-24 projected basic aid subsidy to what the 24-23 actual allotment was, and then I included 25% of Governor Shapiro's proposed public education funding increase. Historically, we've got about 25% of what the governor's proposed. He normally comes out in the month of February or March, does his presentation, and, you know, he shoots for the stars, and it doesn't always come to be, but historically, we've trended about 25%. I will tell you, last year, we hit closer to 60%, so last year was a very good year, and my understanding is the state's in a pretty good position right now as well. So right now, I've taken a little bit of conservative, 25%, I'm hoping to be able to adjust that prior to the June meeting. In addition, our PISA's retirement subsidy is projected to decrease by $118,000. So it has been years, this employer contribution rate years ago was around 1% and it's steadily increased year after year after year, so the last 20 years, it's climbed and it's climbed and it's climbed up to 35.26%. Well, next year's projected to go down to 34%. The state is required to reimburse its 50% of whatever the retirement costs are, so you'll see later, I'll highlight that, hey, our expenditure budget line went down by $236,000, well, we're losing $118,000 in revenue, but it's still positive, it's a net gain, so, but that does have an impact on our state revenue. Federal revenue projections are around $2.5 million, it's about 3% of our total operating revenue. We're looking at an increase of $336,000, 15%. It assumes the use of 1.73 million one-time non-recurring ESF funding for student learning loss and additional classroom supports. So, you know, again, I just want to stress that's one-time, non-recurring revenue, the investment is going to go away. Later on in the slide, I'll note the importance of that particular, you know, use of funds, and we need to make sure that we're positioning ourselves properly for when those fundings go away. So total revenue projection, $63.5 million. It's an increase of about 1.9 million or 3%, okay? So that's the revenue side. Let's look at the expenditure side. Okay, no name department budgets, total $20.6 million. We're looking at an increase of about $2.1 million, which is about 11.5% increase. EWCTC operating budget and the debt service budget increased by $356,000. That's about $1 million, okay? Over the last several years, we've put significant dollar amount into the CTC, we've recognized that the important role that they play within our, our school community and with our, in our overall community. We're putting out young men and women that, you know, into the workforce that we've identified as, you know, greatly needed, okay? But we fund a large portion of their budget. So over the last few years, we've invested in them, and, but it has had a budgetary impact. In addition, they did a $6 million building renovation, that's driven by market value, we're 50% of the market value, so we're, we're funding 50% of that project. Safety and security costs increased by $282,000. You know, .8 mils right there. You know, we have school lease right now, and I think that's adding a great benefit to our school community and to our overall community as well. to our school community and to our overall community as well. And then in addition to that, we did a facilities master planning and visioning study, okay? Resultant in a recommendation requiring some level of debt service funding increases. Right now, I have about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars built in, which is about one point five mils, and is included in this budget. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on as we get into this. Salary benefits make up thirty-eight point three billion dollars. It's, we're looking at an increase of about fifty-seven thousand dollars. Now, I can tell you that is not normal, and you don't see that that often, and I can explain why. These two budget line items normally increase between seven hundred and fifty thousand and one point one million dollars, around two to three percent annually. Remember, we're a service-oriented business, you know, we're basically made up of teachers and educators, and our job is to instruct, so a lot of our money is obviously going to be tied up in salary and benefits. But this year, we offered an early retirement incentive. We had seventeen retirees take advantage of that. Now, it is our intent to replace all seventeen, but again, you're replacing seventeen teachers that are at the top of the scale, the seventeen teachers that are third start of the scale or maybe closer to the starting gifts, beginnings range, so there's a net savings there, and that's what's causing this increase to be so much less than what it has trended at historically. Again, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this again, but PISA's retirement, the rate went down, so we're seeing a reduction of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Again, I mentioned we're also receiving a similar reduction in revenue of a hundred and eighteen thousand, so it's about a hundred and eighteen net impact. So insurances, we have a budget line item of five point six billion dollars. We're looking at an increase of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which is about sixteen percent. We're seeing a ten percent premium increase for our medical insurances. So we've been seeing a lot, lower rate increases over the last several years, but our claims are, have continued to climb, so we needed to make an adjustment this year to get us caught back up. In addition to that ten percent, while we're seeing a savings in salaries because we have more experienced teachers who are retiring and being replaced with newer teachers, we still, the way the language is written for that older retirement incentive is if you go early, we'll offer you healthcare for eight years or until age sixty-five. So technically, we might have seventeen additional bodies that are still on our healthcare, which will cause our healthcare to go off. Overall, it's a net savings for the district, but it does impact on insurances. So total expenditures come to sixty-four point five million, it's an increase of two point nine million, around four point seven five percent. I always like to circle back a little bit further, dig a little bit deeper into our expenditures, and our major expenditures can be broken up into four categories. Four categories make up eighty-four percent of our operating costs, sixty-eight percent goes toward salary and benefits, again, I mentioned, we're a service-oriented business. Seven percent goes to debt service, you're going to hear me talk a little bit about the facilities master planning and visioning study. Currently, we have a budget line item of about five percent. State average recommends you get to about ten percent, so with that five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, it will get us to seven percent. So I think we'll start heading down the correct path. And I always say this, you know, we have over two hundred million dollars of capital assets that we're responsible for taking, taking care of. It's whether it's to build new or do renovations, but that's something that we need to continue to plan for. Transportation makes up five percent of our operating costs. Plant operations makes up four percent of our operating costs. So let's start with the sixty-eight, which is the largest. Salary and benefits, again, it's projected to be twenty-seven million dollars. It's an increase of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, which is roughly one percent. We have over four hundred employees district-wide. Prior to the eleven, twelve school year, our average annual wage increase for contracting employees was around three percent. Since then, it's about one point four percent. So we've tried to be as fiscally responsible as we can with retirements and replacements and those sorts of things, and I think we'll continue to trend in that direction. Again, this particular year, though, it's lower than normal because of those seventeen retirements, which I spoke about previously. Benefit, it's projected, benefit, projected budget is around seven point eight million. It's an increase of about eight hundred thousand or eleven and a half percent. I talked about the medical premium increase of ten percent, and I've talked about the seventeen retirees, basically increasing our covered lives. PISA's retirement, it's about nine million dollars. I always find this, so that's a decrease of two hundred and thirty-six, which I spoke about, but I find our player concentration rate went from thirty-five point two six to thirty-four percent. But this is the one that I find interesting. You know, this one budget line item went from two percent of our overall budget, which is around one million dollars. It's now up to about fourteen percent of our overall budget, which is around nine million dollars. So it has had significant impact to our overall operations over the last, you know, fifteen years or so. And as a reminder, the state law, there's no local control, this board can do whatever, you know, you can't do anything about it, you're required to provide that pension. Now, they've tweaked the pension benefit over the years, so individuals have been hired more recently, the benefit, I would say, maybe just isn't as rich, so there's less that's being passed on to the actual taxpayers, but it still is quite costly, okay? I just, oh, sorry, there it is. Okay, debt service, makes up seven percent of our costs. Debt service projected budget is around four point four, and again, that includes that five hundred thousand that I have built in there, which is three point, or thirteen point five percent. Our current outstanding debt is around twenty-three and a half million dollars, and that's for the Laitre Elementary School construction project. So right now, we have about three point nine dollars, our three point nine million dollars budgeted is our annual debt service payments, and we have about six more years left on that. In November of two thousand and twenty-one, the school board hired S H P to perform a facilities master planning and visioning study. It took fifteen months to do the study. Remember, that period of time, we had sixteen meetings, and they were held with students, faculty, staff, school board, and community university. The result of the study was a recommendation for district-wide capital improvement projects that total around a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, okay? At the March two thousand and twenty-three Board of Tree, we modified that recommendation. We came up with two options that we presented to the board. One was to sort of take care of our existing without doing anything new, but just to take care of the existing capital infrastructure and to do, you know, improvements to, not to basically add anything new. Each option that we presented, it required additional millage to fund the increase in debt services that would be required to maintain or improve our over two hundred million district-wide capital assets. So right now, with five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase, it takes that from five percent, our debt service is now up to seven percent. Transportation is five percent of our costs, if you provide transportation to one student, you got to provide for all, they're asking me a seat on the bus for every student. Transportation projected budget's around three point three million, it's an increase of around ninety-eight thousand or three percent. The budget includes the cost of transport regular education students, non-public students, special education students, and all extracurricular activities. The current five-year contract will begin July one of two thousand and twenty. Year one of the contract called for a five point nine percent decrease, and years two through five call for a two point seven five percent increase per year. The additional point two five percent increase is a result of increased transportation costs due out of district placements, and it equates to roughly eight thousand dollars. Plant operations, okay, makes up about four percent of our costs. The total budget's around two point five, five million dollars. We're looking at an increase of slightly under a million dollars, which is a sixty percent increase, very significant. This budget covers repair and maintenance costs to maintain all of our buildings as well as all utility costs. We have over two hundred million capital assets district-wide. The majority of the increase is a result of increased utility costs for electricity. For example, we were paying about, you know, a little over four cents per kilowatt hour. Now we're paying, you know, a little over eleven cents per kilowatt hour, that's a hundred and thirty-three percent increase, and probably impacts our budget between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Natural gas went from two, two dollars and fifty cents, like that compared to four dollars at that time, that's sixty-five percent increase. So that's, we're dealing with that right now as well. The remaining operations, so those categories make up eighty-four percent remaining, sixteen percent fall into these categories. They total about ten point two million dollars. We're looking at an increase of five hundred and twenty-three, which is five and a half percent. It's for instructional materials, supplies, books, instructional software, special education and student placements for life, career, division, speech, emotional support, autistic learning, gifted, physical, multi-handicap. Technology for student and future classroom supports, student supports like guidance, nursing, library, intuition to the C T C, signage, art schools, and other L A information. So let's look at our trends. Our ten-year actual expenditure revenue trends look like this. On average, our expenditure has increased by about one point three seven five million per year, okay? Twenty twenty-three, they're going up by two point nine, and I can explain why the difference. The difference is C T C operating costs, safety and security, and facilities master planning and vision, they make up that difference. If we assume no millage increase, local grants, and new federal grants, basically, you look at your revenue, and you say, we're not increasing taxes, we're not getting any new grants, what does our natural growth look like? We generate about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars more in total revenues, okay? In two thousand and twenty-three, we're generating about one point nine million. We're having a good year from a local standpoint, we have local revenue growth as well as increased state and federal funds, and that's why there's a difference there. But historically, over ten years, we look, we create an average shortfall of roughly five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year, which is one point five mils, so what I try to communicate with boards is, you know, every year, we've been talking around that one mil. I went back and looked, our average millage increase over the last ten years is forty-nine mils, and this supports that, right? This supports that. Two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four projected shortfall of roughly one million dollars, again, E W C T C, safety and security, and you can look at the facilities master plan, those are, that's really what's impacting. I told you I'd circle back to the ESER, the federal dollars, future budgetary concerns. This ESER budget is one-time non-rate card revenue, it should not be used to balance the budget. Currently, we have one point seven million included in the budget for mental health services, student remediation, replacement technology, teacher assignments, building substitutes, tutoring services, and while all these funds will go away, while the funds will go away, many of these services may not go away, guys. So, you know, we have to continue to plan accordingly. So here's my recommendation. Approve, approve a proposed final budget in the amount of sixty-four point five million dollars. Then our next steps, continue to evaluate our operating expenditures and continue to review potential revenue funding sources, specifically the anticipated level of state funding. So we're going to have more to come in June, hopefully we'll have a little bit better news, but right now, we have a bit of a shortfall. Or, before I get to the next slide, are there any questions on this proposed budget?
On the, on the millage increase, or average millage increase, where do we fall in the surrounding areas?
Yeah, so right now, we currently have the third lowest millage in Lessmore County, and one thing I shared with the finance committee is that if you look at over fifteen years, the average millage rate in Lessmore County's gone up about nineteen mils, and we've gone up about fifteen mils. So from a taxing standpoint, I think we've been pretty, pretty responsible.
And how many school districts is that?
Seventeen.
Right. So bottom three of seventeen.
Right. Bottom three of seventeen.
Thank you.
So the other, only other thing that I wanted to touch base on, because this kind of ties to our budget, is I'm once again recommending that we participate in taxpayer assistance program. So basically, what we'll do is we'll mirror the state of Pennsylvania's property tax rebate program. So you have the state eligibility requirements as the program offered by the Department of Revenue, except, except it's only offered to property owners. Your household income has to be less than thirty-five thousand dollars. You have to be age sixty-five or older, a widow or a widower, age fifty or older, or age eighteen or more and permanently disabled. The rebate will be ten percent of the state amount. Currently, the state amount maximum is six hundred and fifty dollars, so what we would give is sixty-five dollars, and you would not exceed one hundred percent of the property real estate tax. So we started off with this program two years ago, it really offered it five percent. We increased it to ten percent last year, and I would recommend that we continue because it does help to handful of individuals within our community. Okay, so that is on the agenda for consideration. Okay? Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
The facilities operational plan, on the agenda for your approval, there are attachments also for this, would be more bids for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They're all listed there. Facilities operation planning committee meeting minutes of April sixth are attached. Our next facilities operation planning committee meeting will be June eighth at three thirty P M at the Amund Building. Transportation, Mr. Mead.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no reports for transportation, nor student activities, immigration.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Community relations, Mr. Lanes.
Yes, thank you. Grade over the track parks in our recreation commission meeting minutes from the meeting of April sixteenth, twenty-three are attached. The next grade over the track parks in our recreation community meeting will be held this Thursday, May eighteenth at four thirty P M in the Unity and Township New Missipole Building. Moving on to the I U, the next O I U meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, or any other day, Saturday, Sunday, around noon and half at, um, a morning session, most of the afternoon, during the evening, so we...
Thank you, Mr. Lanes. Board policy, Mr. Kozar.
No board policy at this time, Mr. Kozar.
You want to go ahead to the C T C?
I just want to share with everyone that the senior recognition night, C W C T C, will be Tuesday evening, May one third, at six P M in our high school auditorium, and it's always a really, it's a really wonderful event. So even if you're not a member of E W C T C, I encourage you to come and join us, it's a long time. It's just really uplifting, because they, they take the time to say, all right, who's employed? Who's going on the secondary? Who's going to the military? And by the end of it, every student is standing, and it's really, it's parable, you know, it's a, it's a really nice evening.
You're not just a media director.
Yeah, right. Our joint operating committee meeting minutes are an attachment, and I just want to call out one thing. So we had a number of students from E W C T C go onto Skills USA for Pennsylvania, and they competed in Hershey on April twelfth through the fourteenth, and from Graver Laitre, we had Digital System of Production by Robert Phillips, who received a second in the state. This is against every career technical center in the state, so he was second. We have Cora Dryly, who received a third for basic healthcare, and we have Chase Psycho, who received in precision machining, a third place in the state. That's really fantastic. I'm very proud of our students and all of the E W C T C students. We always do a nice show, but to be in the top three of all these areas is impressive. So that concludes my report. Mr. Howser, our next joint operating committee meeting will be Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Technology, there is no report this evening, superintendent's recommendation.
Mr. President, next week, I'll ask the board to move on the resignations that are listed, and I would just note that Ken Meyer is retiring from our maintenance department. He has eleven years with the district. And the other note there is that we just had a resignation from a learning support teacher, so that will actually bump us to eighteen positions that'll need to be filled. I'll also ask the board to approve professional personnel and substitute teachers as listed, support personnel appointments classified as listed, and support personnel appointment supplemental, a volunteer volleyball coach listed there as well. In addition, I'll ask the board to approve the employee benefits and pay plans effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. As you know, those pay plans are, go into effect every, for two years, so we do this every two years. In other business, this Friday is the prom. That's an act eighty day for teachers. Students get, stay home, get all free for the prom.
Students get, stay home, get all free for the prom and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the elementary students put a lot of effort.
They, they appear to encourage, right?
Sure.
Mrs. Cozart already, already mentioned EWC TC senior recognition night. The senior high school awards assembly is on Thursday, May the twenty-fifth at eight twenty in the morning, that's in the auditorium. The school walk, the twenty twenty-three school walk will be on Friday, May twenty-sixth. No school on Memorial Day, that's the twenty-ninth. A note on the baccalaureate service scheduled for Wednesday, May thirty-first, that has been moved to the Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church, that's at seven o'clock. The class of twenty twenty-three will graduate at Memorial Stadium on Thursday, June the first. If you are coming to graduation, please let Mrs. Bravoski know so that we can give you seating appropriately, and if you need tickets for graduation also, please let Mrs. Bravoski know. Our last day of instruction and early dismissal is Thursday, June the first, and I would just remind the board that next week's meeting will not be on Tuesday, it will be on Wednesday the seventeenth at seven P M here in the Center for Student Creativity. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listed on your, and it's also the other meetings were June, the June thirteenth at seven P M for the committee, the whole and regular board meeting, June twentieth at seven P M. At this time, I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Our meeting is now adjourned.